Brooke, you can start anytime.
Okay.
We don't have a call.
Oh, we don't?
Who's on? Just so you can see there.
Oh. I thought I heard Mike May. No?
He was for a minute.
Oh.
David?
Yes?
This is Amy. I am in the Zoom as an attendee. Could you promote me, please?
Sure will.
Thank you. Sure. Can I do that now?
Yeah, we're going to take a quick roll call just to confirm who's here before we start, since we can't see everyone.
Yeah. Which course is here? Betty?
Hi.
Josh? Josh? Mike Nudler?
Yes.
Mike May?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Georgia? Kimberly? Kimberly?
She's here. She's just muted.
Anna?
Here.
Josh?
Josh is not here.
We also have Jordan Esbrook.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, may I go ahead and call need order? Real quickly, before we start the meeting, just an update and reminding everyone that we are going to, we always record the meetings, and we will be posting them to our website consistently going forward. So just to be reminded of that and know that these will be available out there for the public on a specific section of our webpage. And we will have them posted as timely of a manner as we can. All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Next.
Right.
I know Joshua's second. Who made that move?
Mike Nudler, did you make the motion?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
And Ann?
Correct. Yes.
I am obviously here. I was like in purgatory or something. I could see all of you, but I couldn't get out of it, so.
Perfect. We hear you now. Thank you. You're good. Thank you.
We're in heaven now.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, opposed? All right, the motion carries. Is there anyone for public comment? David?
So ladies and gentlemen, in the room, if you would like to make a public comment, if you'll please use the raise hand feature. Otherwise, if you are on the phone, you'll need to use star nine. I'll take you in the order that you appear on my list. Right now, I have three people on the list with their hand raised, and I will unmute. Katerina Bolton.
Okay, and before you start talking, sorry, I'm just gonna limit everyone to three minutes. So once you hit your three minutes, then I will have to cut you off. Okay? Katerina?
I'm sorry, do I go ahead and go? I apologize.
Yes, please.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you. My name's Katerina Bolton. I am a resident in Davenport. I am a Davenport parent, and I am expressing my concerns with the pick for the interim replacement for the superintendent. I believe that the people that are being suggested for the interim position is that they're the same people that have led us to some of these citations and to the audits. I don't believe that. I think it will be negligent if we have these gentlemen in the interim position as they have continued to lead us to citations and audits. I don't believe they can remedy the situation when they try so hard to deny any of the situations that they have yet even understand or believe that they're issues worth addressing. I heard one of the board members mention the elephant in the room was COVID. There's always going to be external issues, and there's always going to be external factors. The district has a long history of racial discrimination against students of families that continue over the decades since their existence have led them to these continued citations. These aren't new. They're kind of history repeating itself over and over again, as I've had family in the district for generations. Instead, they blame our kids, their very own students, on their inability to make progress. They blame it on violence. They refuse to change their zero discipline and bullying policy that contributes to systemic racism and violence. In the audit, every audit shows that they deliberately refuse resources that are required by law for our kids, their students, families, their teachers, and their staff. Instead, they exacerbate the issue by hiring SROs, which factual data in Iowa actually shows that they contribute to the issues that continue to plague the district. They hire communications firms, the same firm that hired the last superintendent. These are all strategic, coordinated, and very cohesive efforts to keep kind of that limited representation for the community, and it further reinforces discrimination. It results in the community believing that their participation does not matter and that their voice won't make a difference, inevitably resulting in us remaining silent. As this continues, it creates an accurate representation that puts a veil on the actual issues and silences the most impacted populations, and ultimately produces negative perceptions about the underrepresented populations that creates a lasting generational impact on their role being as we try to navigate an justice system created by the district and enforced by the community. Again, you cannot expect very people that have led us to these citations over the amount of years to fix these issues, at the very least when they don't even believe them or believe that they're issues worth fixing. Thank you.
Thank you. Who do we have next?
Gina Hale.
Good afternoon. I am here to make public comment to express my deep concern on the ID recommendation to appoint TJ Snackcloth as DCSD superintendent and MBAE, CEO Bill Decker as the mentor. I previously sent my comment in writing to you, so I'm just gonna read it into the public record. "No reasonable person can possibly see this recommendation as effective state oversight of Davenport's systemic failure to comply with state and federal laws and regulations guiding U.S. Department of Education-funded programs. What is at risk now is not only Davenport's accreditation, but Iowa's credibility and certification. The appointment of TJ Snackcloth alone, worse with Bill Decker as mentor, is many steps backwards. These two individuals were in positions of responsibility when the original audits that both DCSD and MBAE happened and were directly involved in the many serious violations of federal laws, program and fund mismanagement, and the creation of conditions which continue to support persistent, widespread discrimination and a climate of hostility for students, families, and staff. Many matters of fact and substantive evidence suggest serious mismanagement of federal programs and funds, including recent responses to unspent negative balances, the as-yet unresolved budget matter of 195 parochial schoolteachers on the DCSD payroll in 2019 and 20, the provision of special education services such as assistive technology, failures to accommodate effective communication under ADA, failures to provide or make available alternative placements required under IDEA, and ongoing failures to evaluate under Section 504 and IDEA." We understand IDEA to say at Section, at 20 U.S. Code 1416E sub 1 sub 2, that the U.S. Department of Education may take action against the state if it is found to be out of compliance for more than a year. Further concerning is a recent lawsuit filed in U.S. District Court in which Judge Anne Aiken clearly spelled out the state's obligation under federal law to ensure that children with disabilities in every school district in the state receive a free and appropriate public education. Iowa cannot afford this level of exposure. The Iowa Board of Education must take effective action. It is conventional wisdom that a definition of insanity is to do the same thing over and over, expecting a different result. We suggest that TJ Snackcloth is the same thing over and expecting a different result. We urge you to work with our community, in particular those voices who have been ignored, marginalized, and retaliated against, to take a stand against the many conflicts of interest, the cronyism, and patronage that undermine our school's success. We urge you to require IDEA to find an outside neutral expert to provide appropriate leadership in Davenport schools and MBAE. Perhaps Amy Williamson would serve as a temporary superintendent, and perhaps TJ, who is apparently favored by IDEA, would be welcomed and benefit from time in Des Moines at the School Improvement Bureau, where he could mentor by experts and closely supervise. We would welcome the technical assistance from our federal partners at the U.S. Department of Education, which is available to IDEA and DCSD free upon request. Thank you for your consideration today. Best regards, and in partnership, we stand with you for Davenport students and families.
Thank you. Who do we have next?
Dan Gosha.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. My name is Dan Gosha. I am a parent of three Davenport school children. I have one more that'll be coming up next year. I am also the vice president of the Davenport School Board. I just wanted to say that I support TJ, and I will do whatever I can to help TJ be successful. And I know I've talked to several of our board members, and we would like to be a part of the solution and work towards getting Davenport to where it needs to be. One of the things I like about TJ, very early on, when he was our interim, he put his head down and got to work. He went up to one of your meetings, eight days on the job, and completely got decimated. But he owned it, didn't give any excuses, and he went to work. Our board, the majority of our board is tired of excuses. We want to see results, and I feel this would be a move to help our district. And I just wanted to speak in support of this, and the majority of us will do what we can to help Mr. Snackcloth be successful in all the work that he has ahead of him. And I thank you all for your time.
Yeah.
Lori Yankee.
Hi, I'm Lori Yankee, and I'm a resident of Davenport. And I am calling in to express my extreme concern of the appointment of TJ Snackcloth, as well as Bill Decker involved interim superintendent, as well as mentor. I don't have to explain to any of you why we're here. We've never had a school district like this commit so many egregious violations while really showing no interest in corrections, and that includes the school board. So bad, the state finally had to step in and take over. So I'm going to ask the question that's on the mind of a lot of Davenport citizens who are unable to call in and ask you, is TJ Snackcloth really the best guy for this job? He's had this job before. I mean, remember, he came to you in November of 2018 after taking over for Dr. Tate. He remained in that position for a year until Dr. Kobowski came on. His reign as superintendent was unremarkable, as in unremarkable that we did nothing really to address the citations except provide excuses and remind the state board that he was just a fill-in till the new guy was hired. His lack of leadership in this area was highlighted in Amy Williamson's presentation last Friday. Adding Bill Decker as a mentor and provider of oversight from the Mississippi Bend AEA is just an insult to injury to our students. Do I truly need to remind everyone that the AEA was audited? And in that audit, they went on record stating that they favored relationships with Davenport staff over doing the right thing for the kids, as they were entrusted to do per the law. So again, I have to ask if this is truly the best the Department of Ed can come up with. A guy that was a part of breaking the law, then followed up with no action for a year while being interim, and then adding a mentor, a guy that allowed Davenport kids to suffer, so they could keep their friendships going. Excuse me. Is there truly no one else to appoint to help Davenport? Now, I understand that it's October 1st, and I completely, I completely get. Finding a superintendent at this juncture of the school year would be near impossible, but especially one that would want to step in and help Davenport. I mean, who would want to deal with elected officials that have gone forward telling the board to revolt against the state, or that they did nothing wrong? That would be near impossible to work with. And I understand that even the State Board of Ed liked TJ. I was at those meetings. People seemed to appreciate his all shucks, Iowa nice schick, and teamed with his sports analogies. But his past performance, as well as Bill's, should tell you all you need to know about how this span of time will proceed for the kids of Davenport. And that's what matters, is the kids. Excuse me. The kids have to come first. And not to copy off of another, but it does remind me of an old saying, "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results." I'm asking you to think of the kids and all they've endured with Davenport consistently choosing not to care or make progress, or even be bothered to fill out paperwork. TJ was part of that. He was part of the violations. So was Bill with his lack of oversight. The Department of Ed can do better, and our kids deserve better, especially considering how long they have waited for someone to care about the racism and ableism they face each day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Athena Gilbreath.
Hi, good afternoon. I am Athena Gilbreath. I am a mother in Davenport, of three, one in college, two currently enrolled in the Davenport School District. I spoke last week in regards to my disappointment in how Davenport has handled the opportunity to fix the many problems that were revealed within the violations handed down by the state. And it is to my relief that there will continue to be guidance from the state moving forward. So I do want to thank the Iowa Department of Education, as well as the State Board, for putting our children first. But I am concerned for a couple of reasons. First, I do want to make crystal clear to anyone from Davenport that's on the call that the noncompliance from the Davenport Community School District, followed up by refusing to participate in the recommended corrective action procedures, is a gross manipulation to our children's futures. When we devalue education, it benefits no one, and that is what we're doing if we don't take the 2,000-plus violations seriously. If we refuse to address the issues laid out before us, we're choosing to stay in the exact same place. And the purpose of our educational system is to advance our children so that they can take the concepts that they've learned that are relevant to the development and societal growth and go out into the world to contribute at their full capacity. Stagnation negates the entire purpose of what I believe the IDEA is trying to accomplish. Now, with that being said, it's not just about the infractions, and it'd be a huge mistake to think about this new direction as being as such. And as extreme and alarming as it is to be one position away from dissolution, the focus needs to remain on our children. They are the ones who continue to pay the ultimate price, whether they're the victims of the systemic racism that plagues Davenport or to be sold short because there are too many kids in the classroom and they can't get that little extra attention that they need. What has happened in the Davenport District and what continues to happen is wrecking our community. We have hundreds of confused parents and elected officials, and even our school board now, giving out misinformation in regards to this next step. And at a time when we need, when we need someone to be phenomenal at this, we're getting assigned a cosuperintendent that the past interim superintendent was, who helped oversee the mess that got us here in the first place. I am a woman who believes in forgiveness, but until I'm much older than what I am today, I refuse to believe in forgetfulness. Most of the violations that were made under the direction of Mr. Snackcloth approximately, were approximately 80 teachers laid off at the end of his first year. Roughly 120 teachers moved all over the place, in many places and positions they never taught at before, at a level they'd never taught at. I spoke last week about my son, who I'm homeschooling at this time. Last year, in seventh grade, he had four different social studies teachers, four. And instead of investing into equity training and work, it was under Mr. Snackcloth's supervision that Gary Thrapp came on board as some sort of motivational speaker to our children. I spoke about him last week, whose presentation in my daughter's class showed, excuse me, included showing children who went down the wrong path as just black and brown children, and then the children who died due to gun and gang violence. Again, black and brown children, right here in Davenport. He also asked the class on a form for each of their cell phone numbers and to describe their relationship with the Davenport Community Police Department. Nowhere on this form did he ask for parents' names. I'm concerned as to why this man now has access to children's cell phone numbers. Mr. Thrapp does not have a teaching credential, does not have teaching credentials. He's a man who owns a gym and says kids can come play basketball there to stay out of trouble. It's not a program like Junior Achievement. It is a man who I don't know, who many parents don't know, having access to our children, causing harm and trauma, all under the direction of TJ Snackcloth. These are only a few of my concerns. I felt that needed, that needed to be on record today. Functionalist theory says that things work the way that they work because they work for certain people. Davenport does not have to be a functionalist district. We can acknowledge that some things work for most students, but aren't we better off if we say that until the thing works for all students, we're still going to search for the best solution? That is the very soul of equity. We're at a moment that is testing us. We have the opportunity to evolve and to put our children ahead of ourselves, or we can stay stagnant. I hope today all decisions are made on behalf of our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other requests for public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Director Lebo, anything before I start? Okay, thank you so much. I want to say first that I appreciate the public comment, and I'd like to acknowledge the concerns of the community members who have taken time out of their day to express concerns, and also those who express support and provide what reassurance I can that we are putting the kids of Davenport first in all of our deliberations at the Department of Education. And I would welcome the opportunity to continue in dialogue with the parents in the community in Davenport as we move through this process. I am going to go through as quickly as possible while being thorough the plan that is before the State Board today, and then open it up for deliberation and questions. So at your most recent State Board meeting, which was just days ago, we, you voted to place an interim superintendent and interim CFO in Davenport to fulfill the corrective action plan. We have before you a plan to get that put in place. It is split into the people and roles, structure and timeline that we are proposing. We are proposing that TJ Snackcloth, who many of you who are on the board will remember from his time serving as interim superintendent for Davenport, serve again as the interim superintendent for Davenport, and at this time, report directly to the State Board of Education. So this is a significant difference between the time that TJ served as interim superintendent in 2018. He will be reporting directly to the State Board via members of department staff, primarily me. Bill Decker, the chief administrator of Mississippi Bend AEA, and Shane Williams, who's the director of educational services, will also provide the role of mentoring, oversight, and support for specifically TJ, but also the entire district of Davenport. They will also report directly to the State Board of Education via multiple meetings a week with me specifically, but also sort of the conduit for Director Lebo. The interim CFO has not been named yet. We have a list of potentials that are either serving currently in an organization or a district but have a lot of experience, or recently retired CFOs from districts not too far from Davenport. We would like to leave that decision up to TJ, Bill Decker, and Shane Williams in deliberation, kind of with department staff here, as we think about who can be in the building at the Administrative Center in Davenport on a daily basis, really giving this the attention that it needs. We would like to have that person named no later than October 9th, however. So as interim superintendent, reporting to the State Board of Education, the way this will work is that Mr. Snackcloth will have all of the authority that a regular superintendent has. This would be for the period of time that the board chooses, and we'll talk about that momentarily. He will focus specifically on getting the corrective action plans done, but he also has all of the other authority that the superintendent would have. He is the interim superintendent. That means that he can direct the current superintendent to do whatever is necessary. And, and you have a little paragraph on that. That doesn't mean that the current superintendent loses his job. That means that the interim superintendent is going to determine how to best use the skills and input of the current superintendent for this interim period. The same goes for the interim CFO. So the interim CFO will take over all of the authority and responsibility that any regular CFO would have, and choose how to best use the skills of the person who is currently fulfilling that role, along with the interim superintendent. I've had several questions about the role of the local Davenport School Board in this. It's very important, from my point of view, that the local board remain a part of this corrective action process. They remain adequately informed. If there is ever a, a time when the local board has been informed about an action that's going to be taken to maintain corrective action and keep this moving forward, and what the State Board wants to see happen, the State Board gets to make that decision, as long as it has to do with this corrective action plan. But we want the local board to be involved, and we really want this to be a collaborative process where everybody's actually moving in the same direction. So we expect that there are still going to be local board meetings and local board business that doesn't even necessarily pertain to the corrective actions. So for the structure, the expectation is that Mr. Snackcloth, Mr. Decker, Mr. Williams, and I will meet at least twice weekly, and that won't be just me. That'll be with a team at the Department of Education, whoever the right people are to pull in, at least on Mondays and Fridays, to see how the week is going to start off and how the week is ending, so that we keep the corrective actions moving. We'll have a contract for the interim CFO that's going to be held by Mississippi Bend AEA. This is partially for convenience, and partially so that it is clear that that CFO is reporting to the State Board of Education, and the contract is not held by the district. Mississippi Bend is going to be compensated for some of their services. This is actually something that I've been asked about, and so I wanted to quote the code section that allows us, actually requires it. So Iowa Code 270, Chapter 273, is about AEA's in the state of Iowa. AEA's can provide some services to school districts such as, by contracts, such as superintendency services, personnel services, business management services, and some specialized maintenance services and transportation. And this is a thing they may do. They do not have to do this. And school districts shall pay area education agencies the cost of providing those services. So this is part of Chapter 273. So the AEA needs to be compensated for the services they provide that are above and beyond those that they would normally provide to a school district. So in my discussions with Chief Administrator Bill Decker, we have discussed determining which of those services are above and beyond, and ensuring that the AEA is compensated so that for Mr. Williams and Mr. Decker, they are able to devote time to Davenport, but also not take away any services from the other districts that they need to be supporting, because other districts are also counting on them and giving them dollars. And I think that this board is, all of the board members are aware that Mississippi Bend has recently turned around all of their finances, and they want to continue to maintain a good financial position and support all of their districts. The interim superintendent's salary, we expect to be commensurate with the current superintendent's salary, and so we have added that here. We would expect that to be prorated for the time that he holds this position. The timeline we are suggesting is an initial timeline of beginning upon State Board enactment. So if you do vote to accept this proposal today, it would be effective upon enactment. And then for an initial period of six months. and then for an initial period of six months, during which you would receive reports during every Board meeting, and you would always have the opportunity to reconsider either lengthening that time or shortening that time. And so the first time that we would recommend that you would reconsider would be at your March 2021 meeting, and that expiration of that time period would be April 5th of 2021. So with that, I'm going to open it up for questions, or see if Director Lebo or anyone else has something that I might have missed.
Thank you.
This is, oh, go ahead, Anne, you got something?
I think one thing just to add also, we did meet with the district and some of their board members yesterday to preview this plan with them and address some of their questions as well. Go ahead, Josh.
So personally, I mean, we've been in this for quite a while now, and we keep revisiting this over the years that, that I've served on here. I will agree that I've been very impressed with T.J. I think that T.J. did as good of a job as he possibly could have during that interim time, put into a very, you know, awkward position. I like the mentality moving forward that he brings to the table. I, I think he's, I think he's going to attack this issue and take care of it. I do worry with T.J. being kind of young in this profession. You know, is he, is he ready for this task? I, I, and I can't speak for T.J. I would just, if he's listening in, I hope that, you know, this is that type of task that could make or break you, you know, for his career and whatever. So I'm sure he's analyzed all that and, and he sought that through, but he does have a very, very bright future, and I've always been impressed with him. So the second part, you know, I understand where some of these parents are coming from with their concerns over Mississippi Bend AEA. Again, we've sat here, we've gone through all the Davenport stuff, we've gone through Mississippi Bend AEA types of things and concerns and problems. I do see some concerns on that mentoring side of things. You know, I, I think those, those concerns by these parents, that, that is well heard. I have concerns with that. I understand that they're more in like a mentoring type of role. I do think optically, it does raise some flags for me. And, you know, I don't know, I mean, Tom Lane has done a good job with a lot of this stuff. I don't know where Tom or what Tom wants to participate in when it comes to this project and this fix. I was thinking maybe we would see his name pop up someplace because he's done some good work on this, and maybe Tom just doesn't want to. You know, maybe he just wants to retire and set off into the sunset and just be Tom. So, but, you know, I, I, I do feel good about T.J. I do have concerns about Mississippi Bend AEA and their involvement, just because of the optics of it. I, I do have some concerns there, so, but other than that, Amy, Anne, I mean, you guys have done a good job. This is nothing easy about this. This is a difficult thing that none of us have ever been through before, and, and, you know, but at the end of the day, it's what we have to do, so.
Go. Josh, I, I just want to tell you that everything that you just recognized as a concern is something that we also recognized as a concern, and I would say that in speaking with T.J. and in speaking with Bill Decker, they also understand our concerns. So, and, you know, I've, I've been here throughout all of this, and I wouldn't put, I, I wouldn't personally put this in front of the Board if I didn't think that it was the best plan at this time. The thing about Tom Lane, and he sent an email, I think to board members in support of T.J., is his wife's not going to let him move to Davenport. And so, and we need, we need people who can be in Davenport every day, in buildings, being there for principals and teachers and other people in the central office. And I fully recognize why some folks who are there now might think that, you know, is this the best person for the role? We have to work with people who are in Davenport now to help Davenport improve. And the AEA has a role in Iowa Code to oversee this. Whether we've had difficulty with the AEA struggling through some financial trouble or not, we have to work with the people who are in this part of Iowa, and so we're going to do that. And the Board has taken a very strong stance in saying, if we put these people in place, they're going to report to you. And so you have that now. And so I think that's, that's really powerful, and it's very important to acknowledge.
Thanks, Amy. You know, and you hit on something too. I think that, if there's still parents that are listening on from Davenport and whatnot to this meeting, you know, we are in October, 1st of October. It's not like there's a lot of people sitting out there waiting to do a job like this. I mean, you know, and you're exactly right, Amy. We probably need to have somebody that's there. They need to be there every day, and that bench is not real deep right now, and we got a really good one that happens to be sitting on the bench with T.J. So I, I, I would just let parents know that we're going to be watching every step of this way, and, and, you know, we're going to be advising. So I, I think it'll be, it'll be fine.
Hi. Here's a, more of an equity concern that I have, teachers echo it, is I understand the mentor and standard availability of Davenport. The key thing is, is like, is there a, we talk about these racial inequalities, is what is, um, Bill Decker, how's he mentoring that? Does he have a background in that? Does he, you know, because he's going to mentor T.J. So if he doesn't, is there, are there resources to help address the racial inequality? Because around Iowa, there's great AEA's out there that have shown progress with these same demographics. Very impressed by Waterloo, et cetera. So can, if Bill Decker doesn't have it and T.J. doesn't have it, is it understood that they go out and reach and get the knowledge and understanding? That's key, right? These gaps. So we don't want them to just try to do it by themselves. There's people, there's other AEA's and other districts that have done, have done progress in these racial inequalities. So that's my biggest concern, is that if, if you don't have that understanding, you don't have that, that, that desire to close those racial inequalities, it's like, it's, it's, I don't, I'm, we're going to keep stagnant.
Yeah, completely understand. And I guess the, the thing that I would say, Kimberly, is if the Board chooses to go with this plan, that doesn't mean that you have to go with this plan and you're done. So there is still the ability for the district to contract with additional experts to help them with the places where they do not have the expertise. And so I'm not, I do not disagree in any way that they may be lacking in some of the expertise that they need to address, some of the racial inequality, the disproportionality. They continue to ask for help in those areas, and they're very open about asking for that help. So if they need that, then we'll, we'll figure out how to help them find the right people. This is a first step.
And, and I just want to remind everybody too, that this is, you know, these are the individuals that we're going to have on the ground, kind of on the front lines, but this isn't the only work that will be done, and, and we do have the ultimate oversight on this. So as we identify their progression to meet these concerns, we are going to help find the resources for them. The value that the Board has in this now versus before is we can control that, and we can direct that. But we need the people there to do the work. So we are, we have been very mindful of setting them up for success. We've thought through options, we've looked at different scenarios, but we truly believe that in order to actually affect change over the long term, this is the best plan that we can build upon to get them where they need to be.
This is Mike May. Just make a couple of comments and quickly, Josh. I think I agree with a lot of what you said, Josh. I think T.J. is a big boy, and, and he knows what he's getting into. I think that's, that's probably a positive thing, and I, I would suggest that whatever happens here, I think T.J. will land on his feet, he'll be just fine. I do see a complication there when you are leading, you are leading the district and had your bosses now one, a, a, a person who must respond to you. I can't imagine how complicated that's going, going to be. But again, I think he probably, probably is aware of that, and he'll have to make that decision himself. What I'm most concerned about, I think, is public confidence. I don't see how we're successful in Davenport unless we have public support. I would have liked to have heard from more board members, and of course, board members have been part of the problem in the past, but still, they are representatives of their community. And what concerns me most, Amy, is, is the confidence that the public has in the process. And if we can't ensure that, and we certainly wouldn't do that with everybody, and I know there'll be some detractors anyway, but the truth is, we need the public to support changes in Davenport. If they don't, what, no matter what we do, we're not going to be successful there in helping the kids. And i- it's just a concern that I have, and if you have any response to that, I would appreciate it.
So, Mike, I, I wish that I had a better response to this. I have been concerned about public support and public involvement in Davenport since 2017. I think every visit we've done, every, you know, we've written up something in our report or had a discussion on, on the ground with the district about continuing to involve the community. The, the issue is involvement of everyone in the community, not just parts of the community. And that's not to say anything bad about those who are more active, and you have to go out and find the people who don't want to be active right now, because a lot of the community is completely disengaged from this. And so I think that there have been some really nice efforts made to start community involvement in like the, the crisis response and violence prevention. It's just not where it needs to be, and the best that I can say right now is that part of the plan that we have written is a commitment to community involvement.
Thank you. Excuse me, I just, Mike, I, I promise, I'll just be quick. I, I appreciate your response, and, and I think part of that mentoring and part of that action plan in the past has been, how do we communicate with the public better? And certainly, that has to be part of what T.J.'s doing. I know he tried to do that as interim superintendent, but that is just so key to this. So, thank you, Amy.
Amy?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Mike Nedler. Just two things. I'd follow up on what Mike May was saying. As I listened to the Vice Chair give comments, I was really disappointed that he kept saying a majority of the Board. And I don't know, this doesn't specifically deal with the Board, but it seems to me that it should be the entire Board is interested in doing something, and I don't know if something can be done to work with them. My second comment is, I would hope that the CFO would be somebody outside of the Mississippi Bend AEA because of our past experience and, and our financial problems they've had. It doesn't engender a lot of confidence if that person were to come from Mississippi Bend.
Yeah.
And we do have a list of possible candidates, and they are outside of, of that AEA. That AEA will simply hold the contract of whichever one they choose.
Thank you.
John?
Yes, just a few insights. I don't know, T.J. always seems like a, a great person. I guess my concern, when I heard that he was part of the Davenport School District, is, has he been part of the, the issue that's been created over the years, and now we're asking him to lead the way to coming up with the, with the solutions? I have some reservations about that. He may be a wonderful person. He may be the best person for the job, but it seems kind of ironic to me that if we're looking for somebody to come in and be a leader and take the bull by the horns and address these issues that we have, somebody that's internally working within the school district, which I would have thought that he would have had some impact to begin with, and then assigning mentors to him, does that make him stronger or weaker? Or does the mentors mean that he needs help, or am I misreading the mentorship altogether?
So I think part of this setup is due to the fact that he is an internal person, you know, to one extent, we need some external accountability there and support. The other part too is that, you know, this isn't just for T.J. to solve. They are now under the direction of our guidance and the mentorship that we can provide and the resources. But having someone internal who can implement them and is part of the system and understands the system is, is what's a little bit different about this than going out to hire a new superintendent, bringing them in, and relying solely on their ideas and innovations to get things done. We're looking for that balance of talent, resource, and an individual that we feel like can guide what, what we believe is the best vision to help get the district forward. And I think that's what's distinctively different between any previous, you know, we go back in history and the concerns we might have. It is different now. The control is different, the guidance is different, the support is different. We have much more of, of a direct ability to affect change with the parties involved.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
This is Mike Nedler. I'd kind of like to follow up on what John said. Amy, I know you've worked with T.J. in the past. Some of our comments seem to suggest that he was part of the problem. Could you comment on maybe how, in general, you saw his performance, and whether or not he was really making a difference in a very difficult position?
Absolutely. So I can say that prior to the 2017, 2018 action, where we went into the district, certainly T.J. had no decision-making authority over special education. He was not part of any of those problems because his position was over federal programs that were not special education, and so he could not have had any of that decision-making. I also know that because I do federal programs here at the department, and T.J. worked frequently with some of the staff I supervise, and I also do special education compliance, and that was a totally different staff person at Davenport. And so that simply wasn't what T.J. did. That, and he also, he was not an associate superintendent, he was not the superintendent, and those were not the things that he was in charge of. When he took over in the interim role as interim superintendent, I think it's important to remember that even though he was the interim superintendent, we did see a lot of correction that year. And I, we did have Sandy Schmitz there too, and she got a lot of that corrective action work done, and Mississippi Bend did step up and provided a lot of services with Kim Hoffman, their special education director, working closely with Sandy Schmitz to, to get all of those meetings done. But T.J. did ensure that things were, I would say, barriers were moved out of the way to make sure that that got done. So even if he wasn't doing all that heavy lifting exactly himself, he was moving things out of the way to get it done. I, the additional issues that we found with suspension expulsion, I think that you can't lay this at the feet of any, a single person in, in Davenport, that a, a district is out of compliance with so many things, and they have so much work to do, right? And certainly not someone who was neither an associate superintendent or superintendent for all of those years leading up to this. So I'm not comfortable saying that T.J. was part of this problem personally.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
I just, this is Mike May, again, and I, I don't want to belabor the point, but a part of the, part of the solution is to, again, regain the public's trust, and somehow... And somehow TJ needs to lead that effort of reaching out to the public. And I have no doubt he'll try to do that. But he needs the board's full support on that. And the board needs to be active in that process. That this is different this time, that we are dealing with the issues that the state board has identified and the department has identified, and we're going to do this in a different way. I just think that's imperative. And if I'm going to support this, I just need that assurance that, that this is very much a part of the plan going forward. That we're going to communicate with these parents who are very much concerned that we've heard from today and we've heard from, with, with emails. Again, I just can't emphasize that enough, but thank you.
We have a message on Zoom that there are other Davenport board members in attendance who are willing to speak if you would like to hear from them. We're almost at 2:00. We are almost at 2:00. I just wanted you to know.
And, and I think, you know, Mike too, you know, we're, we're, this is a new situation for everybody. And so, you know, from their perspective, how this might be perceived and how this feels, you know, we want to create as much of a sense of all of us working together to go forward. And, and this will be the point, this is sort of point A, the beginning. And I think all of those things are part of the priorities, they're part of the goals. And that will be our common message as we move forward. And that will take work and that will take time. And I think that's why, you know, the amount of time that these individuals will be meeting and working on these priorities will be substantial. And I, hopefully through that process, we'll be able to report some of these things back as they start to see change, understand the direction we're trying to go and really start making the difference that's needed for this, for this entire community.
Amy, this is Betty. I have to admit that when I read the recommendation, I was surprised. I also have reservations about, well, about the entire plan, but I have reservations about TJ. I know it's a different situation. I know there's different oversight this time. And you are trying to set him up to succeed. I just think this is going to be monumental for someone who has been in his role. And, and as John said, you know, second, or not second necessarily, but not in command and now in command. And I, I worry about that. All of that said, I think I'm willing to give this plan a try. But I guess just for the record, I'm pretty, I'm pretty concerned about it. And, and I think as a board, we all need to have really strong oversight over the next several months.
John?
Were there any other candidates considered for this position? I'm not asking for names, but Aviv was the search to find somebody.
Other candidates were considered. I would say there wasn't a substantial list, but others were considered. I think we were trying to find what we felt as we worked through all the scenarios and how you start to play this out, what would create the best opportunity for, this isn't just about filling out the plan, this is about implementing the change and getting that done. And this is what we felt after much discussion would be the most successful plan that we would have.
You know, I think that over the past, since we've been dealing with this since 2017. And I, I, like Betty, I mean, when I read it, I was like, oh, okay. I mean, not necessarily in a negative way, but I was surprised, not going to lie, to see TJ's name on there. And then I think I was also surprised with the Mississippi Bend kind of supports. I mean, it makes sense, I understand. But I think that over the past three superintendents that we've had, I think that TJ probably has shown us the most. I think that, you know, Josh was right. I mean, he came in, he number one owned up to all the failures. And then even though he had really nothing to do with it, and then he rolled up his sleeves and said, what do I need to do? And every single time he came back, he asked for feedback, how he was doing. I, I really felt like he listened to us. So I think that change starts with a good relationship. I feel like now we have someone in place that actually we have a good relationship with, who actually is open and honest and willing to change. And I think that he is responsive to us. And so I think that's good because now we actually have more control over the situation as well. And he doesn't have to, you know, fight with the other barriers. So I think we've removed the barriers for him to move forward. And this is a pivotal moment, you know, sink or swim. So, and I think he understands that. And I think that if we provide him all the supports I need, the direction I need, I'm hoping that he'll swim and he'll be rise above on this occasion. So I'm hopeful that this is, you know, and I, I'm happy that he's there and he knows ins and outs. And, you know, and so hopefully, once we start to accomplish this, I hope, you know, to address Mike May's concerns, I hope that, that kind of builds trust in the community as well. That, you know, once these things start being resolved, then people can actually see that and then everyone can kind of move forward. So, but I think that there'll be no trust in the community or anything until these things, these issues start being resolved.
This is Hannah. I just have a quick thing to add. And I'm kind of on the same page as Betty was and a little bit as Brooke was. I, when I first saw this, I was a little bit surprised that we would, you guys were going to be putting somebody from inside the district in the superintendent role. But I'm starting to understand and see the connections that he has already made previously and how this plan will work out. But as far as like the public trust, that's an issue that I'm really concerned about, especially from the student's perspective. I can't imagine what it's like to be a student in that school district right now. With the change in leadership and all the changes that are happening with COVID this year, there's a lot of change that's going to be happening in that district. And getting students on the same page as the decisions that are being made is going to be super important. And so I don't think that we only have to work on gaining just the school board's trust or just the parents' trust. I think there needs to be a big, a huge emphasis on getting the students' trust. Because when they have this change in leadership, it's going to be hard for them to start to have trust in that new leader. And so whether that's having focus groups with students or working one-on-one with them, I'm not really sure what you need to do. But I think that including students in the, in these discussions that are from the Davenport School District is going to be absolutely essential. And if there's any way that I could help out with that, I'd love to. But as we move forward with this plan, I'd like to see students more involved. Because I think that we've seen, as far as the public comment from the last meeting, that it doesn't really feel like students are being put at the center of this. And the only way to do that is to make sure that Davenport students' voices are being listened to and they're being involved in this process.
I absolutely agree. Thank you, Hannah. Is there a kind of a communication plan kind of moving forward? So once we make this decision, kind of moving forward? Because I know that's, we got some emails about kind of what's happening and people are kind of wondering. So is there going to be like something that just goes out to parents and families just saying, so this is a huge change, you know, now this is what's happening? This is, is that coming from here or does that come from the district or?
So I think it could sort of be both. Because our first, you know, depending on how we vote today, our, our first step then would be to reach out directly to the district and communicate this is the transition and start that timeline. And the first piece would be communication. It could be a joint communication, but certainly so that the families know. And we will want to make sure we publish something publicly as well. And part of the sense of urgency for this meeting is to, is, is in light of the questions, sort of the unknowns and making sure we get a plan in place right away to start moving forward.
Anyone want to make a motion?
This is Josh. I would so move to go with the department's recommendations as we had in our agenda.
Thanks, Josh. All right. Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Betty.
Thanks, Betty. All right, Brooke?
Aye.
Betty? Josh?
Aye.
Mike Nedler?
Aye.
Mike May? Mike May?
Aye.
John?
A reserved aye.
Georgia?
Aye.
Kimberly?
No.
She motioned past. And I appreciate everybody's sentiments here also. And I think the other key piece of this that you want to remember is that you still have the authority to adjust this plan. You still have the authority to monthly to review this plan. And so your satisfaction will be key to this. And this is not a final action that is permanent because it ultimately lies within your control.
Just, just a comment if I may. Well, the reason why I supported this was that it's going to be important, half of the plan gets in place is to have a real integrity as far as implementing the plan. And so if, if TJ is, is our guy for now, once the plan is in place, it really has to be a commitment among leadership and staff and board and all stakeholders to make this plan work. And implementing the plan is going to be a lot more arduous than developing a plan.
Absolutely. Yes. All right.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your time today. There will be prompt communication. We will be reaching out to the district and we'll be keeping everyone very actively involved.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'm really second.
Was that Mike Nedler? Yeah, it was.
Yes.
All right, it's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? All right, the motion carries. Me adjourn.